Good evening. It's Tuesday, April the 2nd. I'm going to be calling our committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Moving on to our land acknowledgement, the municipality of Port Hope exists on the lands in the Miisissagek Anishnabek, traditional territory covered by the Williams Treaties. We honour and recognise First Peoples as rights holders and stewards of the lands and waters in which we have the privilege to live, work and play, including the Ganaraska Forest and River. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. We commit to actions towards truth and reconciliation by recognising the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, strengthening ties with First Nations, Métis and Inuit Peoples, especially those who make their home in Port Hope, and learning from Indigenous ways of knowing and being. We do so by recognising the past and working towards a shared future. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I note that none were received in advance of this meeting. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, correspondence, 3.1, Salmon Fishing Community Roundtable Input for Consideration by Council and Staff. Deputy Mayor Claire Holloway will discuss.
Okay, I'll try not to touch it because apparently I'm jinxed. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I elevated this, this was a piece of correspondence that was shared with members of council. I elevated it to the agenda this evening simply because it's an issue that's of great interest to the community and I just wanted to provide the opportunity for other members of the public to see the results of the Community Roundtable and the kinds of ideas that were generated that have been shared with staff for consideration as they work on plans for future years of the salmon run here in our community. And I just also wanted to publicly thank all of the members of the community that spent time. We got together three times to discuss the issue and I really appreciate all of their input and I'm pleased to answer questions if any members of council have them. And also perhaps to invite CIO White to speak in lieu of Director Snook.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll turn it over to the CIO then.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On behalf of Director Snook and all of staff, we wish to thank the members of the community who participated in the round table. We know that there is a vast amount of interest in this important topic across the community and all of the information that has been gathered has been submitted to the working group on the salmon fishing and we appreciate all of it. All of it is being taken under sincere consideration as staff and the working group work through their conversations with the ministry as well as all affected parties. So your voice is heard and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from around the table? Yes, Counselor Todd.
All right, thanks very much. Claire, I was wondering if, as much as possible, as much as you're aware, if you could maybe give us in the community some background, maybe some context around it, how many people were in, how they got selected, maybe just a little bit of that.
Sure. So the group got, it all started with the petition last fall that was garnering a lot of attention and a lot of signatures. And there was a lot of conversations starting to happen online and offline between members of the community, some opposed to the fishing altogether and some really wanting to preserve the fishing and making sure that, seeing how we could make it a more enjoyable experience. So it was really kind of by word of mouth and invitation, I reached out to a few of the more vocal community members on both sides of the debate. And they also all put forward names, oh, also speak to this person and sort of it grew. So I think each meeting actually had more people, but it was a mix. We had a representation from one of the local faith communities. We had local downtown business owners. We had very passionate and avid anglers at the table as well. We had people who were coming from an environmental lens, looking at it from an Indigenous perspective. So it really was quite a diverse group. Actually, Counselor Adam also participated in one of the meetings as well. So it was, it was a mixed voices and it was really actually quite inspiring to see that when we first came together, I think there was a sense that there were, you know, opposing camps, but as we discussed further, we found a lot of common ground and I think came up with some great ideas, some of which I think are already, are shared by members of the working group as well. So I hope we'll see some of them come to fruition.
Yes, Counselor Les.
Thank you for all the work. I know it's, it's, it's a big job and there's lots of opinions. A couple of things, when do you think you'll finalise your direction as to what you're going to do?
That's, that, I'm, I'm, I'm done. Well, for now. My, my role was just working with the community and helping to facilitate that, but CIO White is better positioned to answer that, I think.
Director Snook would be the perfect person to answer, but on her, on her behalf, they are working. There is no timeline on the exact directions. They are working closely with the ministry. So there's no timeline or no date that we can give you as we sit here today, but I do know that they're close. And as soon as the directions are decided and the way we're going to move forward as a community in regards to actionable items, council will be advised.
And my second question is that I noticed there's nothing here that says that licences or permits would be required to fish the river and we could control that if we only allowed so many licences per day?
Thank you for that feedback. I'll provide it back to Director Snook and the working group. I think the correspondence that you received in today's agenda package is just the feedback from the Community Roundtable. So that information is going to be elevated up to the working group where the final decisions are made.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so can I get a mover and seconder to receive this item for information? Moved by Counselor Adam, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, all in favour. Thank you very much. Moving on to items for consideration, we'll start with 4.1, Presentation by Catherine Barr, Account Manager, Municipal Stakeholder Relations, Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, MPAC, regarding MPAC updates. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship, Members of Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you today. I know I have met some of you over coffee post the election last in 2022 and have presented at Northumberland Open House, Northumberland County Open House. But I, I hope that some of this is a bit of a refresher, but also I'm happy to include some new content in terms of some initiatives and new information that we have recently published. I'd also like to point out, I do have with me my regional manager, Natasha Dowood, and some of you have met her. She's here for moral support as well. So let's get started with a bit about MPAC. Our job is to assess and classify, sorry, more than 5.6 million properties across Ontario worth more than $3.1 trillion. Ontario added over $42 billion in new assessment last year and every year municipalities use our assessment to make decisions about their community, including the distribution of property taxes. So the four key players in the Ontario Property Assessment and Taxation System are the Ontario Government, specifically the Ministry of Finance, is responsible for setting the assessment and taxation legislation as well as policies. The provincial government determines when MPAC conducts an assessment-wide, a province-wide assessment update, as well as sets the valuation date for each assessment cycle. MPAC's role as an independent not-for-profit corporation, which is funded by all Ontario municipalities, is to accurately assess and classify all properties in Ontario. We do this in compliance with the Assessment Act and associated regulations set by the Province of Ontario. Municipalities determine their budget requirements, you set the municipal tax rate to deliver your municipal services, and municipalities rely on MPAC's assessments to distribute the tax requirement to property owners. And lastly, property owners pay for the property taxes for the community services they receive, but they also have a role in setting market value through their ongoing property purchases and sales. So the next portion of the presentation, I'm really just going to give a brief overview of how we assess properties. So the five major factors listed in this slide, location, lot size, quality of construction, the square footage and the age of the property, account for more than 85% of the current value assessment that MPAC attaches to a property. This is for residential properties. There are over 200 factors that we look at when we determine CVAs, current value assessments, such as secondary structures, number of bathrooms, finished basements, the site location, is it a corner lot, proximity to a green space, traffic pattern, to name a few. When determining our values, we look at a number of data points. This slide shows all of the data sources that we source, such as all sales transactions, requests for reconsideration, ARB appeals, tax applications, land severances, inspections, rent rolls, property income and expense reports, as well as third-party data, including CMHC, Federation of Rental Property Owners and Farm Credit Canada. So MPAC continuously collects and updates detailed information for every property in Ontario to ensure that similar property taxes are valued consistently within the market area. I wanted to highlight About My Property, which is a wonderful portal for property owners to access to learn about what information we have on file about their property. They can compare their property assessment with up to 100 properties in their area. They can also, if they disagree with the assessment or want to challenge any of the data that we have on file, they can file a request for reconsideration via About My Property, which is done electronically. I would like to point out that, that there are annual deadlines for that and today actually happens to be the deadline for the 2024 taxation year for RFRs. So the next portion, I'm really just going to focus on a brief overview of assessment and property tax and the relationship therein. So assessments distribute taxes. They do not determine the taxes paid. Each year municipalities and taxing authorities decide how much money they need to raise from property taxes to pay for the services and they determine the tax rates based on that amount. And for property owners, the calculation is quite simple. They look at the MPAC property assessed value, times it by the tax rate as established by the municipality and the education rate by the province, and that determines the property taxes that they pay. But since there has been a pause on the annual, or every four-year annual reassessment, there's been no province-wide reassessment since 2016. And owners may be nervous about the next reassessment and worried about the property values, but owners need to be mindful that an increase in assessed value does not necessarily mean your taxes will go up. The most important factor is not how much the assessed value of a property has changed, but rather how the assessed value has changed relative to the average within the class in that particular municipality. This next slide is a very simple illustration of that concept. If your property assessed value increased more than the average in that particular municipality, chances are your taxes might increase. If your property assessed value increases the same as the average within that municipality, chances are taxes will likely not change. Conversely, if your property assessed value increases less than the average, taxes may decrease. Now again, this is very simplified and assuming that there is no changes to budgetary requirements. This next slide is really just one of many myth versus facts that we prepared in post-municipal election in late 2022 in anticipation of a province-wide assessment announcement, which never came. We developed a number of tools for municipalities to leverage to help educate property owners in the event of an assessment update, to allay some fears and maybe assuage any misconceptions. And this myth versus fact is one of many, as I was stating, this one, property assessment increase always means a tax increase. No, there is no one-to-one relationship. If there's a municipal revenue requirement increase, then there will chances be a tax increase. Other myths such as my property value has doubled, therefore my taxes will double. No, there is no one-to-one relationship. Again, a number of these content that we use, we, we were hoping that municipalities could leverage, elected officials could leverage with their discussions with property owners as well as use on websites and social media, et cetera, and we have had some very good feedback on that. So the assessments that were to occur for 2020 through to 2024 were paused due to the pandemic. The province decided to postpone the assessment update to enable municipalities to focus on responding to the challenges of COVID. As a result, property, properties still continue to be based on the valuation date of January 1st, 2016. So I'd like to point this out because MPAC continues to maintain an update, the assessment role to reflect any changes such as new construction and improvements to properties. In the case of any new buildings or structures added to properties after that valuation date, MPAC determines the values they would have had had they existed on the current valuation date. The same valuation date of January 1st, 2016 remains in effect for properties that have sold during this same period. The only time the valuation date will be revised is when MPAC is directed through legislation to conduct a province-wide assessment update. I'd also like to point out that last year, August, the province announced, or they filed legislation actually, to continue the province-wide assessment postponement because they are conducting a property assessment and taxation review. So the property, province-wide assessment will be postponed until they conclude this property assessment and taxation review. And what that entails, we're not quite sure. We have been sharing our insights. We've been sharing our data, our market data regularly with the ministry. But I would like to point out that last week during the spring budget, the province did indicate that consultations will continue with broader engagement of stakeholders until spring this year. So what happens in a non-reassessment year? So I've just highlighted some of the activities that MPAC does in the background that you may not be aware of. Last year, we added 37.5 million in new assessment for Port Hope's tax role. We process sales. We continuously sever and consolidate lands based on land transfers that we receive. We pick up building permits. We process tax applications, requests for reconsiderations. We track all inquiries from municipal staff as well as property owners and we meet regularly with municipal staff and councillors and provide presentations. And just last year in November, we mailed over 1,000 property assessment notices in November ahead of delivering the 2024 role return for Port Hope residents. And these would reflect any change in ownership, assessed value, tax classification, newly severed properties, school support changes, or mailing address changes, to mention a few. This slide is really just representing our forecast for growth for 2024 for Port Hope. So annually, MPAC provides forecasts based on all the building permits that we see that could be closed. We provide quarterly updates. These are part of our service level agreement commitment on certain key performance indicators. And I just indicated here how much we have in relation to date. And we have 28.4 million planned for this year that we hope to capture. We're at 10% of our forecast, which is only 2.85 million now, but we have a bit of a runway. We're starting our notices starting this month through to November. And another key metric that I like to point out that I report on regularly is how soon we can capture that new assessment within one year of occupancy because that's a very important metric. We want to capture that growth as timely as possible. So this slide, I really wanted to, just to give you a bit more context. So annually, MPAC as a province, we add about $40 billion to municipal tax roles, right? That equates to about 50,000 new homes that we add to the role every year. Bear in mind, I mean, the province has a goal of constructing and assessing 1.5 million homes over the next 10 years. Doing the math there, we're going to have to do things a little bit differently if we're going to help be a part, be a part of the solution to build more affordable housing. So we have to basically triple our efforts. So how we're doing that is we actually worked with AMO's LAS, which is the business arm of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and we developed a new digital building permit program. So we collaborated with municipalities to digitise their building permit process, which enables us access to electronic building plans to allow for more efficient data collection. And I'm very, very pleased to report that nearly 340 municipalities have submitted digital building plans. That's 340 out of 444 municipalities. So they've submitted them electronically. That equates to over 31% of all building plans received are received electronically. This means that we have the ability to capture new assessment 150 days earlier, which means that new, we can capture new revenues sooner for municipalities. And I would like to make a shout out to your staff. They are wonderful in our, in response to our requests for building plans and responses to requests for information. I just want to give kudos to your municipal staff because they've been very, very helpful. So how do we support municipalities? As a partner and a valued stakeholder, we do meet regularly with municipal staff to keep them up to date on any program changes or product changes. We also provide council orientations like this one. We attend all, most, if not all municipal conferences and provide presentations so we can again reach elected officials. We develop resources for municipalities. I referenced the property assessment and taxation toolkit that we developed in 2022. And I'd be remiss without mentioning Municipal Connect, which is our digital platform for municipal staff to exchange information and get real-time assessment data. And that is developed in-house. We also provide training to municipal staff on Municipal Connect. And lastly, our monthly municipal newsletter, which highlights any new initiatives and new products and services. Property owners are another valued stakeholder and we're always looking to improve and enhance our relationship with them. And we revised our corporate website. It's, I'd highly recommend you take a look at it. It's very intuitive, easy to navigate. We've enhanced it, most recently I'll highlight in the subsequent slides, but another program that we permits. We invite them to either make an appointment or to contact us to exchange information. We're also very active in various social media campaigns and we have a number of educational videos such as how does MPAC assess farms? How do I file a request for reconsideration? Or how is my, how are my property taxes calculated? So I highly encourage checking out some of those resources. I'd also like to highlight the First Time Homeowners Hub. We developed this late last year because, think about it, we have not presented any assessment, updated assessment since 2016. So in that intervening years, there's been a lot of new property owners that have purchased homes and they've had no interaction. They may have no understanding of who MPAC is, what we do. And we developed this on our website and we encourage municipalities to leverage some of the information there. We have wonderful FAQs there such as why does my property assessment have to do with my taxes? Why is January 1st, 2016 an important date? Again, we're getting very good traction on this and I highly recommend you check it out or point it to it if you're speaking to any residents. Lastly, I wanted to highlight a new property insights. This was launched in February and again, it's a fantastic tool. It's on our website and it allows users to look at how the residential property market has changed over 10 years. So we're looking at the period from 2013 to 2023 and users can drill down to each, any municipality and see the distribution of properties, either detached, semi-detached townhouse or condos, and see how it's changed in their assessment base. So I've just done a few screen grabs for Port Hope. So in 2013, for properties, detached homes, under 250,000. In 2013, that comprised 42% of your assessment base. In 2018, that dropped to 0.5%. And in 2023, we're at 0%. So there's a lot of data there. It's provincial, but you can also drill down to municipal level. But there's been very interesting data insights that have been gleaned and it's getting a lot of traction in the media. So I wanted to point that out because it's just newly launched and I'd be curious at getting your response on that. So I wanted to point that out. And that concludes my presentation. I want to thank you for your time and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that very informative overview and I'm going to turn it over and ask if my fellow councillors have any questions or comments. Counselor Les.
How do you think MPAC can influence or change the trajectory of the number of houses that we're trying to build?
How can we? Well, what we can do is we can make our processes more efficient, like I was pointing out with the e-permitting and digitising of building plans and capturing that more efficiently. In terms of policy, we're, we're operational. I can't really comment on any policy related to building more homes, but I know we're trying to improve our services and capture new assessment growth as soon as possible within our means.
The other question I have is, how far along have we gotten to standardising housing builds like we did in the post-war years?
That is a question I'm, sorry, I don't feel I'm capable to answer in terms of standardising housing, construction. I make, I could take that offline and come back to you. Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I learned stuff. That's great. That is really well done. I'm going to ask a question that occasionally comes our way and it has to do with new builds. So you've got new people who moved to the community. They've now purchased a new build. Their property is at today's market value. It's only been the last year or two, so obviously MPAC hasn't had an update since 2016. So they often ask, how come my taxes are so much higher than everyone else's I talked to in town? What sort of answer be given? What's the, what's the short form of something like that? And how much does it have to do with the value of that house and the size of that house and so on?
Remember the five factors, year built, age, quality of construction, et cetera, et cetera, lot size, square footage. Those factors are accounted in, in our values. They comprise 85% of it. But remember, new builds are still assessed as though they were built at the valuation date because we have to basically attach a value to every property as though it was sold on that date, right? So we time adjust. We have models and we time adjust those. So yes, technically newer homes would have a higher value based on those five factors that I've mentioned there, right? But they are, they are valued as of a January 1st, 2016, so they are time adjusted.
Thank you. And so then my follow-up question for inquiring minds. Thank you. And so then my follow-up question for inquiring minds is, so as we continue to grow and we build more and more housing, obviously, the older homes, you know, they're not changing their location, they're not changing their build, they're not changing the year and all that stuff. So most of the five factors would probably stay stagnant, except for if they happen to put an addition on. So in comparison to newer builds, do newer builds then help those others as far as the average go, like they would keep their taxes lower? Or how does it impact them?
Well, actually, sales determine, right? And we look at all of the sales transactions and determine which are open market sales, and that goes into our data analysis. So it really does depend. You could have an older pocket of older homes, et cetera, but it's high demand, high demand area. It's a coveted area. So the sales will dictate the market for that.
Great. Thanks so much for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I do have a question, and I'm sure you're not going to be able to answer, but I'm going to ask anyway. You mentioned that in the most recent budget, the scope of consultations is expanding for this process that's going to proceed. Any, well, you know where I'm going with this. Do you have any sense of what the timelines are on the expanded consultations and when we might expect an update on the 2016 numbers?
I would love to answer that question, because we're waiting with bated breath as well. No, I would actually direct it back to you to say I would liaise with some of your lobbying associations, perhaps AMO, et cetera, to inquire if they're part and parcel of these stakeholder engagements. I do know that it isn't property assessment. It's property assessment and taxation, right? So please bear that in mind, and I believe everything is being looked at. And I don't believe there's anything for the next year plus, but I cannot give a final answer on that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments around the table? Okay, we're seeing none. Thank you very much for taking the time to come and give us this presentation. And hopefully, next time we see you, it will be with new information as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to now make a motion to receive this presentation for information. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by Councillor Adam, seconded by Councillor Todd, all in favor. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to item 4.2, we have a presentation by David Baxter, Director of Finance, regarding Northumberland County property tax policies.
Thank you. We'll keep the exciting property tax train coming. But first, I'm not sure if you've got this up here so quickly for me. But first, just to point out, so we were talking a little while to you about the budget roadmap. So the thanks again to our MPAC reps for coming and providing that presentation. That is another step, both from a council member, professional development and learning opportunity, but also from a budget roadmap, right? And we think about, well, why budget roadmap? But we know we talk about things like our growth numbers, right? When we talk about the impact of the budget. So in, you know, in all that good information that Catherine provided to us, you'll note last year's growth, thirty-seven and a half million. This year's forecasted growth, and this isn't for certain growth. This is based on building permits and site plans that they have and the general estimate, right? But twenty-eight point four, so almost ten million lower. Okay, so when we start, this is kind of those that bridges when we're building up and thinking about the budget, right? When we're starting to think about building the 2025 budget, right? I and you would be now taking that as a takeaway, that, you know, growth is likely going to be less when we're, the benefit of growth is likely going to be lesser when we're establishing the 2025 budget as opposed to the 2024 budget, okay? And as we know, that becomes, you know, it just becomes one component, but it's a fairly, you know, key component, right? With more taxpayers sharing and contributing to the operations of our municipality financially, then there's a lesser burden on each of the taxpayers. And then when we're looking at an increase to run our community, right? That just means that by sharing it out and having, you know, new taxpayers effectively, that that increase is lessened for the existing. If that makes sense. So thank you again, Catherine, for the presentation and for Natasha for coming out as well. So on a similar note and continuing along on our budget roadmap, tonight, I'm going to talk about Northumberland County's property tax policies. And obviously, these are not our Port Hope municipal bylaws and policies. Property, most property taxation policies are set at the county level. So I am going to do my best to speak to these at a fairly high level, really to create awareness, you know, for each of you as we go through the process. Some of these you will have some familiarity with. Some of you, you know, some of this will be relatively new information and be a little more tangible. And honestly, there's one or two that I'm not going to get in that much depth, that if you just kind of know that they're there, that's about as in-depth as we're going to get into some of them, okay? So first, just as a summary, the first four I'm going to speak to are legislatively required. So there is an annual bylaw the county passes to set tax ratios. Typically comes in March, so maybe fairly familiar to our mayor, who's probably just listened to, listen to the tax ratios. And shortly thereafter is the annual bylaw to establish the annual tax rates that are levied against the lower tier municipality. So they set their tax rate. We'll set something to set ours. The province will send us the education rate, and then we kind of put them all together. They then have a tax relief for low-income seniors and persons with disabilities. So that's a legislatively required policy, as well as eligible charity tax rebates. And then we have two optional ones, one that provides for municipal housing facilities and another that establishes small-scale on-farm business subclasses. So I'm going to go through, as I said, each of these at a fairly high level, just to establish some awareness. So you've heard me talk before about tax ratios. Ultimately, that is, sets how each property class, you know, pays in relation to the others. So they're typically set here, you know, as a number to four decimal places that ultimately gets attributed in. I'm going to try and speak to them a little bit in terms of dollars, right? So the residential rate is a base, right? And so everything else I'm going to speak to is going to be in relation to the residential property class paying, you know, one dollar. So if the residential property class is paying one dollar, the multi-residential property class is paying a dollar eighty, okay? So you think about like the apartment building, right? It's not just two units, it's multiple units. So think about an apartment building, right? The valuation per unit or whatever is smaller, and that's likely why it had a higher, you know, ratio in the past. So a multi-res, so one point eight. Back in 2017, the province put in a restriction and said this isn't to be higher than two. And if it is, any increases get passed on to the other property classes and not multi-res. And so in 2018, the county reduced the rate down to two. And then last year, reduced it from two to one point eight. And this year, which may have now just passed, but certainly county council is looking at decreasing it to one point six. And part of that reason, if you look down to the next line, is that the province established a property class called new multi-residential. And so if you were to build an apartment building today, right next to an existing apartment building, the new apartment building would be paying one dollar, the same as existing residential. The apartment building next to it that would have been there ten years ago is paying, was paying a dollar eighty, right? Or used to be paying over two dollars. So that is part of the reason of moving it down to one point six, right? It's a phased process to bring it down. It also is supportive when we think about affordable housing. And so it's positive on that front. Every, every time too, it's being phased down with the thought that, you know, the province has provided several indicators in terms of looking at affordability that are each calling for a reduction down to the residential rate. Obviously, they've established the new multi-res to try and make it more, you know, enticing, appealing, easier, or more affordable to develop more multi-res is to bring the new multi-res rate down to one. So, you know, from a fairness standpoint, trying to bring down existing, you know, there is certainly the potential that the province comes forward and sets a new where they previously came in and said, you know, it'd be no more than two, that they then start a more prescriptive reduction. We don't know what that looks like, but that is part of the thought and part of the advice that the county has been, has been provided around why you would go in and reduce. And there are certainly areas that have already are much, you know, are lower than we are, but we're now at one point six, getting more around, I'd say, around the average space. I spoke about this previously, and I'll come back to it when I talk about some of the municipal things we do related to taxes. But as that ratio comes down, if we hit a certain threshold, right, our municipal staff then turn around and send notices, right, out to those in the multi-res, first to the landlords, letting them know that because there's been a tax reduction that's hit the threshold, that notices are going to be sent out to the tenants, right, and that there is a required reduction in their rent to align with the reduction in taxes. So on that basis, it does actually then start to assist in the affordability. Now, there's different thoughts in terms of once that is done over time, you know, is that retained? How much does that actually help with affordability? But certainly, we can't control, you know, the whole process. So these reductions in the multi-res are being, you know, are being done for, you know, for good reason, for certain reason. I just want you to understand that. Because when we, you know, when we're soon going to be talking about, you know, the impacts to the typical residential homeowner, and we think about, well, what are the upward pressures? Well, we're still collecting the same amount in taxes, right? So when the multi-res, when their rate comes down and they're contributing less, every, all the other tax groups, right, are then turning around and paying more, right? Now, more to different extents, right? And this decrease each year in terms of the multi-res works out to about ten to fifteen dollars per typical residential property for a municipality, say, of our size. But when we look countywide, I think the range was like five to twenty dollars. So it does, you know, it does depend on, on each municipality. So that's just a little bit of insight into the multi-res. We've seen it now come down to one point six. I don't know what that will look like, you know, in the future. But, you know, I would say if any of the ratios were to change, I'd anticipate that this one might come down, you know, even, even lower, right? So and certainly, as Catherine just spoke about, the province reviewing property taxation overall, whatever, you know, we don't know the timing, but in terms of anticipating what some of those outcomes might be, I certainly could see, you know, that new property taxation system identifying multi-res, whether you're new or not, being at a lower tax ratio, right? And so if we are able to phase that down and do it in, say, twelve dollar per residential homeowner increments, that phases it in as opposed to it being effectively forced in, which could have a two, I think it was like a two to three percent impact on a residential homeowner if it was all done at once down to one. Okay, so it was a little bit more insight into the multi-res. That's the one that's kind of moving right now. As I go down on the commercial side, it now, it pays a dollar and fifty cents per every dollar that the residential pays. That one has come down slightly over the past few years, and the industrial now pays two dollars and ten cents per every dollar of residential. Previously, that was over two dollars and sixty cents, right? So the industrial side, when we think about growth and we think about trying to diversify our tax base and industrial and commercial properties, our industrial rate was actually quite high. And so that one has been brought down to be more aligned with some of our comparators. And then more recently in 2017, there were two subclasses for industrial and commercial, which identified, so you might have an industrial property, excess land would be utilized, be beyond, say, the parking lot, you know, land, and they got a tax reduction. And so that was removed in 2017 with some of the thought being like, we don't really want vacant land sitting around. We don't really want excess land. We would like for it to be put to more productive use. And with removing that, with those two subclasses then paying a bit more, what they did is turn around and do reductions to the overall commercial and industrial rate. So pipelines play almost a dollar twenty cents. Landfill is at a dollar, but we don't have any private landfills. Farmlands and managed forests pay twenty-five cents for every dollar that residential pays. Okay, so those two are important to have awareness about as well. That's the main part of the tax ratios. I will just quickly touch on, though, if a farmland is awaiting development, it then kind of moves out of that twenty-five cent, you know, category. And there's different phases. So I'm not going to get into that. But we, they do provide for what the reductions are, what the levels are within those phases. It also provides for commercial and industrial small-scale on-farm business subclasses to be reduced by seventy-five percent. So that could be industrial if there's some processing happening on a farm, or, you know, a small commercial business attached to the farm. So those do get a reduction as well, in that no tax rate reductions are to be applied to vacant or excess land subclasses, which I spoke about. All right. The county then passes an annual bylaw which establishes its tax rates. It changes every year. So I'm not going to speak to what the actual rates are, but they also establish when the payments are going to be delivered, the municipality, if the actually collects all the property taxes for the municipality, the county and the education, then at the end of each quarter, we provide effectively a quarter of that money to, over to the county. So we just send a payment at the end of March, and then at the end of each quarter, except for December, in which case we send it in the middle of the month. So the county has a bylaw for the cancellation of tax increases for the purposes of relieving financial hardship for certain low-income seniors and low-income persons with disabilities. So this needs to be the assessed property owner or their spouse qualifies as a low-income senior who is at least sixty-five years of age, who is in receipt of payments under guaranteed income supplement or the Ontario Works Program, or a low-income person with disabilities in receipt of assistance paid under the Ontario Disability Support Program or ODSP. An eligible property is qualified as their principal residence and must be assessed for taxation at a value that is equal to or less than the current mean property value for single detached residential properties. Okay, so you valued home and be participating. This provides relief in the amount of either the incremental annual tax increase year over year, up to five hundred dollars. The county also has a bylaw which provides a rebate for property taxes for eligible The county also has a bylaw which provides a rebate for property taxes for eligible charities. So registered charity, right, as defined under the Income Tax Act and has a registration numbered issued by the CRA. The property or portion of the property needs to be in the commercial or the industrial property classes. You can't be operating out of a residential unit. Eligible charity pays their taxes or amounts on account of taxes on the eligible property that it occupies and may make an application to the lower tier municipality, which is us. So the rebate is forty percent of any eligible base tax amounts for property taxes or the BIA charges. That's if you own the property. Or a hundred percent of any eligible base tax amount payable as additional rent, right? So if you've got rent set up and then you pay rent plus taxes, that tax part would be rebated, okay? Then we have municipal housing facilities. And if we're interested, you know, certainly in the strat plan aligns to affordable housing. So this, this is one, you know, of interest certainly. So the county may pass bylaws permitting the county to enter into municipal housing project facilities agreements with housing providers. They must meet a threshold for affordability to be a low or moderate income households. It must achieve one of the following: support the development of affordable housing, preserve or improve affordability of housing, or assist in bringing existing affordable housing into compliance with the Ontario Building Code. County council may also consider property tax reductions, exemptions, or grants on a site-specific basis. County council may also exempt for the payment of all or part of the development charges imposed by the county. And I do know, just like, you know, on our end, if we do an exemption, it then means that the county then has to raise those funds that it is exempting. They don't just kind of disappear, okay? So now moving into, or sorry, this is the last one. So the, the, the housing was an optional one. This is the second optional one the county has in place. So this is for the small-scale on-farm business subclasses. So this is to establish both the first and second optional small-scale on-farm subclasses for industrial and commercial, right? They get the reduction. So it's an option to set these up. And then as I spoke about on the tax ratio bylaw, then applies a reduction of seventy-five percent. Okay? All right. Thank you for sticking with, with me through that. I know it's not all exciting, but it is really good to have, you know, awareness. And just like, you know, I think my property is overvalued, you know, councillor, can you help? On the MPAC side, you know, there's certainly, you know, this is helpful in terms of just building your overall awareness. And then as you get questions from taxpayers and things as well. And as, as always, if, if the, if the inquiry coming to you goes beyond, you know, your knowledge and comfort level, please refer them to staff. Please refer them to MPAC. It's important that we make sure that they get accurate information and we're happy to help them.
Thank you very much, Director Baxter. Indeed, it's helping us to paint the more comprehensive picture and get a much better understanding. So we appreciate that very much. I have a couple of questions for you. One is, do you know what percentage of all county taxes come from Port Hope?
Give me a minute. I think I do.
Well, and while you're looking for that, has there ever been an instance where a lower tier withheld taxes from an upper tier?
Not that I'm aware of, but if we were to, we would just be charged interest until we did pay. I know I have somewhere that information. I was thinking that it was in this presentation that the county had done previously. I am not so certain that it is. I think it was in the report that I did not bring with me. But I can find out, and it is actually quite interesting when, when they actually reduce, every time they reduce the multi-res, right? Because we have obviously have more multi-res in some of the smaller municipalities. So while in between, and we certainly see a shift from our multi-res to our residential, it is small increase on industrial and commercial and all other tax. Our net as a municipality, the amount that we as a pay, we, our share actually reduces, right? We're actually paying less to the county overall because we have the reduction on the multi-res side. Everyone else is going up as well for their residential and industrial, but they don't also have the reduct, the same level of reduction on the multi-res, save and except Coburg. So on a net basis, you know, with that, you know, Port Hope as a whole is actually providing less taxes to, to the county, so.
Thank you. It would be, it would be great for, for the record to know exactly what percentage of the overall county taxes do come from Port Hope. I'm going to take questions now. Councillor Les?
Yes, if a private developer builds multi-residential and a portion of those units are deemed affordable, would they get a tax break for the units deemed affordable?
So if they were to build multi-residential now, right? They would be at the tax ratio of one, so they would get that benefit. They would, there are provisions now under the Revised DC Act for special treatment for affordable units. They would need to look into some of that specifically to see if, you know, if that needs to be all or what the portion of. But from an actual taxation standpoint, no. Not unless there was potentially, it was provided for under a community improvement plan. So a community improvement plan is, is one of the few tools, right? Where you can provide some relief, just like we have for our, you know, downtown. And we've had new businesses, you know, start up and, and we've provided some relief. We can't provide relief to them through taxation, like right on their tax bill. But a community improvement plan is one of the means under the provincial legislation, which does allow us to provide, you know, to provide for that without it being considered no bonusing. And I know the county has, like the county has an Affordable Housing CIP and we have one in our future.
Doesn't make sense why we can't, but anyways, we'll fight that battle when it comes.
Any other, yes, councillor Mink?
Thank you, through the chair. So one, just a little question. The pipeline class is one point two and farmland is point two five. So in the scenario where the pipeline runs through farmland, is that not privately owned farmland or does the pipeline actually own that land?
I don't want to put the people behind me on the spot, so I'm going to take the first crack at this. So I think wherever, wherever there is pipeline, I'm pretty sure that land must be owned. I mean, it might, there might just be a lien on the property, do you know? But I think they, I think it would be owned, like any, they get charged for anything that they, that they own, but I would think that they would have to actually own the strip of land through the farm in order to do it. I think it's more complicated than, you know, like a, like a right-of-way or I think Todd may be laughing at himself a little bit because I'm, I'm trying to speak planning in a little bit. I'm just going to stop, but yeah, they actually, they would actually own the land. Just like if you look for like the railway, right? So as you go through, all the properties that the railway intersects are actually separated out. And here we would bill CN for, for their, for the railways. The, the, the pipeline kind of would work the same way.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, councillor Les?
That's interesting. Do we charge the railway taxes?
Yeah, that's what the, the pipeline. Those are done a little bit differently in terms of how they're, they're done at set, some cases it's at rates. If it's just like the linear railway, you know what I mean, as opposed to if they had like a railway station or whatever else here? That's more where that would, would come into play. But effectively, we do charge both railway and pipelines for property taxes in some form.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So the recommended action is to receive the presentation for information. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Les, seconded by councillor Todd, all in favor? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to item four point three. Report CS zero seven twenty-four, RE twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven, Advisory Committee Appointments, Heritage Port Hope Advisory Committee. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is a standard report. We've brought a few forward for council's consideration with respect to advisory committee appointments. This is the final advisory committee that is in front of council, committee the whole for consideration. Following that, you know, we have been pausing our recruitment for the committees because they are filled. So it's a fairly straightforward report. It's there for your consideration. The five names went through, you know, a rigorous selection process as, as noted in the appointment policy. So they're there for your consideration. And I think that the selection committee is, is present here tonight and, and members would be able to comment on, on that process as well.
Thank you very much, Ashrishmar Clerk. I'm wondering if councillor Attridge would like to add anything to, to the report or the comments about the selection process?
Yes, thanks very much. Yeah, we, we had a lot of enthusiastic applications for Heritage Port Hope. I will note that, you know, from planning's point of view, Sagar Babar was playing sort of point person on this. He's no longer with the municipality, so I will share as much as I can, answer as many questions as I can towards that effect. But yeah, we, we interviewed, I would think about a dozen people. We had some great enthusiasm for it. We landed with five people. Not everyone from the previous committee applied again. We had six on the last committee. We chose five for this one. We are looking at tweaking the, the scope of the advisory committee as we go. And so we were looking for some skills. We have some great people who have backgrounds in real estate and in restoration and historians there. So I'm very happy with the way in which this went and very excited to get this committee up and running.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments or questions about this? Okay, so we're, we're, the recommended action is that the following candidates be presented to council for appointment for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven Heritage Port Hope Advisory Committee term in accordance with the appointment policy. Karen O'Hara, Deidre Gardner, Yvonne Rogers, Mike Whelan, Thomas Balatka. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that? Moved by councillor Attridge, seconded by councillor Adam, all in favor? And that is passed unanimously? No, councillor? Okay. We, I, I was, I was calling a vote on the Heritage Port Hope Advisory Committee. I just wanted to make sure that we were all voting. Are we unanimous on that? Okay, so, all right, thank you for that. Four point four, Report PD ten twenty-four, RE ZBO eight twenty twenty-two, zoning bylaw amendment, application portion of fifty-six fifty-nine, fifth line. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Through the matter to the rest of council, not generally, not necessarily. This is a pretty straightforward report. This was a public meeting that was held on March nineteenth. And so we turned around pretty fast. We're getting a little faster at doing this. Was really relatively straightforward rezoning related to the outcome of a committee of adjustment decision. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Yes, councillor Mink?
Thank you, through the chair. So I just have a question. It's related to this, but in general, when we get these applications. At the public meeting, I asked the question about whether there was exceptions attached to this that we're getting where there's no future severances or anything like that. And I've seen some of these come back before where there's, there's a rule on, on a, on a agricultural property about not housing livestock and things like that. So when council gets this report for consideration, do we see all those attached extras for our consideration when we're approving this? Or, or do they just sort of get attached and filed away?
So back to, through the chair to councillor Mink. So in this, in this situation, I think what you're referring to is usually conditions related to how's the housing of livestock or, you know, no houses being built on those properties. Those are often conditions of consents related and they go through the committee of adjustment. If there is a condition specifically fixed to, to the zone, what it would actually in effect do is create a special zone for that property and you would see that condition as part of a special, as part of a special zone. So in this incidence, really what we're doing is we're recognizing the residential nature of the property that, that has always been. And if there was a condition, it would have been contained in the committee of adjustment decision-making process. I, the condition of that process was to rezone the property, which is what we're doing today.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the recommended motion is that a bylaw be presented to council to rezone the subject lands from rural RU to rural residential RESR to recognize the existing residential use. Can I please ask for a mover and seconder on that? Moved by councillor Mink, seconded by councillor Adam, all in favor? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to report four point five, WE zero four twenty-four, RE Walton Street Reconstruction Update Number One. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Thank you. I would just like to note that phase two of the Walton Street Reconstruction Project has been awarded to Clearway Construction with a scheduled start date of April twenty-second. The project was launched with a public information center on March twenty-fifth. Staff and the construction contractor were in attendance to provide the latest updates on the reconstruction project, including timelines, scope of work, and how to stay informed throughout the project. As part of the construction work, a number of plans are being developed to address construction activities, including road closures, detour routes, business continuity, pedestrian access and parking. The plans will be executed via social media, on-street signage, public notices on the website, council updates and the mayor's regular updates to the media. Additionally, a dedicated webpage, porthope.ca/walton has been created that is planned to be updated regularly as the project progresses. All email inquiries are being directed to publicworks@porthope.ca, which will, is being monitored by multiple staff to ensure a timely response. Port Hope Downtown is open for business this year and staff remain committed to reducing the burden and impacts on owner, business owners in the downtown throughout the reconstruction. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. I'm, I'm just going to start by a few comments to say what superb and excellent public meeting that was. I think it set a new standard for us in this is community. I've received a lot of very positive feedback from the event. And I know that folks are asking for more such meetings as, as the process continues. So I just really want to thank you for that great start and everybody in the staff that was involved with it. I do think it was excellent. Any comments, any questions from the table, councillor Les and then the deputy mayor?
Yes, so when it comes down to executing tourism and marketing initiatives, who will be in charge? Which department will be in charge? Who makes the final yes, no?
Through the chair to councillor Andrews, are you asking who makes the tourism-related decisions?
Well, if the tourism overlaps the construction or we want to do something in tourism and works in engineering are saying we don't have the people to execute that, how do we, how do we resolve those type of problems?
Yeah, go, go ahead. Aside from a fistfight between Jeanette and I, which we don't, nobody wants to have happen and I would most certainly lose, I will defer to the CAO.
Thank you for your question. To avoid all of that, we host every Tuesday morning at eleven AM. We have a Walton Street Reconstruction Working Group meeting where members of every department attend and we flush out all attend, and we flush out all of those concerns, questions, conflicts. We also have a public relations firm that is working with us to oversee any economic development and tourism activities, one-on-one with the businesses directly. As of now, we're trying to predict any of those event-related conflicts and what we can do to enhance those events and utilize them to assist with economic development in the downtown core. But ultimately, some of it, we're going to have to pivot as some of those pop up that we couldn't predict. But ultimately, the team is together. It's glued together when it comes to Walton Street, so there's nobody working in a silo. So I would be quite surprised if there was a conflict that each department couldn't work out, and we're well-resourced. So I think we'll be okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor? Thank you so much. Director Davidson and everyone who's been involved, thank you so much for all the work that's gone into this plan. There really are so many different moving parts and considerations to this. It's quite astounding, actually. One question I did have, there was mentioned in the report about encouraging other forms of transportation, including increasing pedestrian access to the downtown. And it occurs to me that this could be a real opportunity to get into new habits as a community in terms of how we move around and how we access the downtown. And as someone who does regularly use an alternative form of transportation, I can tell you bike parking is really few and far between in the downtown. So I wondered if that was something that was being considered as well, as how can we increase bike parking and perhaps other ideas that you might want to highlight around those alternative transportation encouragements?
So we are currently developing an active transportation plan for the project, which does look at providing transit or alternative means, including bikes.
Any other questions or comments?
Sorry, just to add to what Jeanette was saying. Jeanette, it was disposed of this morning, so I sat in on the meeting as well. And I will say that bike parking was on the agenda today. So it's something that we already are considering. So we may not get it perfect out of the gate, but we're working hard to catch up.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the recommended action is to receive this report for information. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by Counsel Todd and seconded by the Deputy Mayor, all in favor. And that is passed unanimously. Moving on now to Report 4.6, PS0724, Re Solar Eclipse Update, April 8, 2024. Does staff have anything further they would like to add before we consider this report?
Thank you, Chair. On April 8 of this year, the total solar eclipse will be occurring in the municipality of Port Hope. It is a rare event and affects most of member municipalities of Northumberland County. A total solar eclipse happens when the moon crosses between the sun and the earth and totally blocking the sun from view. I say that experience a total solar eclipse is in the path of totality. Northumberland County is in the path of totality, stretching west to east from Port Hope to Brighton. The municipality of Port Hope has been in communication and working with emergency management Ontario, Northumberland County emergency management professionals, and local municipal emergency management coordinators for many months to ensure that the municipality of Port Hope is adequately prepared for the event, as there is an expected influx of visitors to Port Hope and Northumberland County to view the eclipse. Stop in providing information to both internal and external stakeholders and our residents over the course of the past few months related to this event, including but not limited to the importance of wearing protective appropriate eyewear to view the eclipse and the importance of preparing for the potential influx of visitors to Port Hope. Information pamphlets related to the eclipse were distributed in our Spring Municipal Water Bill to over 3,000 households, and we continue to update our residents with information on all social media channels, websites, and municipal facilities. Information regarding eye safety and the potential impacts of the event have also been made available publicly through the federal, provincial, and county levels of government, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, any comments, any concerns?
Deputy Mayor? I'm always interested in the things that end up on our agendas, that I don't expect to be in our domain, like an eclipse. But let's just a comment that let's hope that there are a lot of visitors to Port Hope and that they come ready to shop in our downtown. Be a nice little boost to our business community and advance of the construction.
You're here. Any other questions, comments? No, everybody's got their glasses, everybody's ready for the day. Excellent. Okay, can I? The recommended motion, of course, is to receive this report for information. Can I get a mover, seconder? Moved by Counsel Less, seconded by Counsel Todd, all in favor. And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to item number five, Notice of Motions. Before we begin deliberation on this matter, I do want to make a few comments. I do want to note that as per the procedural bylaw, a notice of motion is brought forward at a council meeting where it is placed on the agenda but not discussed. It is automatically put over to the following committee of the whole agenda where it is discussed and deliberated. Then, final disposition of the matter is at the following council meeting. This is in line with our usual practice and is what we have been doing for many years, even before our new procedural bylaw was in place. However, tonight, I would like to recommend that we suspend the rules of procedure to deliberate this matter, as opposed to waiting until placing the matter on the April 16 council meeting, which would mean it would not be deliberated by council until April 23rd. I do want to note that I did give notice about this motion coming forward at our last meeting, and I did confer with the clerk, who is comfortable with putting this motion forward. So I strongly believe that this is the right course of action on this matter. And I do recognize that suspending the rules of procedure is not our usual practice. But given the fact that the timing of certain announcements isn't always up to us, and especially when it involves different levels of government, this is one of those instances where we may need to, in fact, pivot. And I would like us to pivot so that we can be in line with the provincial announcement, the planning, and the launch for the Youth Wellness Hub in our community, of which we also heard a presentation at our last meeting. So at this point, I would like to ask Counsel Attridge to take over the chair so that I can bring forward a motion to suspend the rules in order to consider item 5.1, Youth Wellness Hub at tonight's committee of the whole.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor, for that motion. And could I get a seconder so we can discuss? Seconded by Counselor Adam. Thanks very much. Any discussion on this matter from council? Yes, Counsel Less?
I had the opportunity to delve into the website for the Youth Wellness Hub, and I...
Thanks very much. I'm going to take a vote to suspend the rules of procedure. If I can take a vote. Did you have a question, Counsel? Okay, yes. Okay, yeah, sorry. The look on your face made me second guess that. All in favor? Right, thanks very much. Now, we're going to move on to item 5.1, which is the Youth Wellness Hub. So I'm going to ask Madam Mayor, would you like to introduce this topic?
Thank you for that. I believe that we had a pretty fulsome presentation last week about youth wellness hubs and what's happened here in the community in terms of securing a youth wellness hub that will be situated in Port Hope, serving the entire county of Northumberland. I think it is a remarkable transformative opportunity for the community. It is something that takes most communities between two and three years to secure, and it'll be the first hub that is east of Toronto. The next hub available is in Kingston, and there is no hub, as I've mentioned before, right through up to Peterborough. The whole idea is to build resilience in our youth, to ensure that they have the right services at the right time, at the right place. And the most exciting part about any hub is that it is tailored for community needs, so it's not a one-size-fits-all. And it is very much designed by youth for youth, so it's a space that they're comfortable to come and be in. There's lots of different activities and programming that can take place there. And as those relationships of trust build, they also know that there's access to a number of different supports and services to help them through critical parts of their life course. So it is really tremendous. We've got 23 service organizations that are part of the Youth Wellness Hub right across the county, and there are a number of very exciting fundraising initiatives that are already in place to support the work of the hub. So I think it's exciting for the community.
Thank you very much for that. I'm actually going to come back to Counsel Less. Would you want to speak to this matter?
Yeah, I'll make it short because I already... I was on the website. It's very worthwhile to go on, and it's very detailed and lays it out in pretty good detail. That's virtually what I wanted to say.
Wonderful, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just to say, I was really pleased to second this motion, and I would be quite happy to serve on a steering committee, which is outlined in the motion. I just, I know I can speak for families in this community. This is going to be a tremendous asset to us. It's filling a very important need, not only for safe spaces for youth to gather and hang out in our community, but also to access needed supports for mental health and other challenges that we know our youth are experiencing.
Wonderful, thanks very much. Counsel Mink?
Thank you. So through the chair, I actually have a question, and it's not... It's about the delivery of this in the community. So with the question, of course, it's important, like many of the services that we have here locally, such as... Drawing a blank. Up at the fish ladder, David Greenwood, sorry, Greenwood, you know, and then we, in the county, you know, YMCA, Cornerstone, all these organizations are fantastic. So absolutely no question about that. But the second statement here, and further that council directs staff to liaise with appropriate youth wellness hub in Port Hope to explore potential links, is the intention that this become a service that the municipality is going to support on a go-forward, or will the relationship be similar to what we have with these other community organizations?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor, or yeah, CAO, please.
I've been fortunate enough to sit in on a few meetings with Director Snook on this exact topic, and the municipality's approach to it is going to ensure that there is linkage between just the current youth outreach and youth committee that is already established through our Parks, Recreation, and Culture Division, and ensuring that if there's an opportunity to create a partnership, as far as, you know, they can utilize some of the recreational amenities at a municipal space, you know, through a program that's being offered at the Youth Wellness Hub, that there's no red tape or barriers, that we're working together. But as far as right now, as we sit here today, there is no commitment from the PRC Division to be offering a deliberate dedicated service to the Youth Wellness Hub. It is specifically a partnership.
Thank you for that, Counsel Mink. That's good. Yeah. Any other questions or comments from council? Nope, seeing none. This has already been moved and seconded, so I'm going to call for a vote. The motion has already been stated, it's in the agenda, so I'm not going to read it out loud, but if we can just call the vote, all in favor, and that's passed unanimously. Thank you so much, and I will send the chair back to the mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, counselors, for your support on this. Moving on to item number six, we don't have any updates and new business. So moving on to item number seven, which is our question period, please remember that question period is for questions only and is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of council. Please keep your questions direct. So if you'd like to ask a question, please step up, identify yourself, and provide your name, your address, and ensure that that infamous purple button is pushed. So I'm going to just start. Do any counselors have any questions around the table for one another, for each other? Nope? Okay. We don't have any media present, so now on to questions from the public.
My question is, it's about, there was a lot of talk tax and whatnot, and talk about affordable housing and whatnot. I'm not clear on if there is a definition of what is affordable. Like, is there a baseline that municipalities or the province or anything, does anybody know if there's a baseline of what's affordable? Like, is it $1,000 for an apartment? Is it $2,500 for an apartment? What... Is there a baseline that the taxes are based on when they're talking about, like, new builds and stuff like that?
Thank you very much for that question. It's a really important question, Ed, because one of the things that has been discussed and debated extensively is to have uniformity in how affordability is defined and how... And there's another subcategory, which is deeply affordable. And I know that there are continued conversations about this. I know that there's conversations about this at the county level. Typically, it is considered to be 30% of somebody's income to go to housing, but...
So how much percent was that?
30%.
30?
But that is not a uniform approach. There is a lot of discussion about having a better and more realistic metric in today's day and age. And I do know that our deputy mayor sits on the intermunicipal committee, council, and I'd be happy to have her comment on this as well. And Counsel Todd as well, but she's closer to me, so I just turned to her.
I would actually, I don't have the figures off the top of my head, but I know that this is something that was covered in a recent report that was commissioned by Habitat for Humanity Northumberland. I believe it came out in the late fall, and I will happily send you a link to that where you can get some of those answers in terms of what does that look like in Northumberland. I think a lot of the time, it's sort of talked about as like a percentage below market rent, but of course, it depends on the community and what market rent is, whether that is, in fact, actually affordable. So there is a lot of debate about it, but I'll make sure that I get you a link to that report.
Is there some relation between income and affordable and low-income housing? Like, is there some relationship there?
I was looking at you. Marilena, because I know, you know, there would be county policies in relation to that.
There are, but it lacks clarity and definition much, much of the time. And again, I think the really tricky areas between what falls into the affordable category and what then falls into the deeply affordable category as well, as prices increase, as rents increase, as salaries aren't keeping up with that, as we know Ontario Works is an increasing its supports, that these all have to be revisited, and it's almost project by project and case by case sometimes. But I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer for you, but we will get a better answer for you.
Well, I'm just wondering if there is an incentive. We see all the subdivisions being built, and when I drive around, I look at these places and I go, there's no way I can afford to anything in that kind of thing. Is there any kind of incentive that is out there to have builders? But like, we're just recently hearing about the fourplex thing and, you know, all that stuff that's going on. Used to, when I was young, that's where everybody lived. Everybody lived in fourplexes and Ontario housing and all that kind of stuff. Is there any incentive at all now for whatever affordable would be?
I think there's much work being done on diversifying housing stock. I think that's one thing we can talk about. I do think that we're starting to see a lot more investment. one thing we can talk about. I do think that we're starting to see a lot more investment from both levels of government, when I'm talking about higher than us, from the province and the federal government, to reduce taxation on rental build. We've recently seen an additional influx of money coming in from both the province and the federal government towards housing. So hopefully, within all of those parameters, we will see more incentives for building and hopefully, some of that money will actually trickle down to this municipality. And as we continue our land inventory here in Port Hope and hoping to create better partnerships with the county around housing projects, that we might start to see some of that here in our own community.
Okay, thank you.
And I see councillor
So Ed, think of it this way, the government eventually came around to the fact that there was going to be a minimum wage and the minimum wage has been increasing. We arguably, is it enough? Who knows? We got to take the same tact with housing affordability and say, okay, we're going to set the limit at, based on minimum wage or some factor thereof, at a thousand dollars. And we're going to subsidise builders to build units so that we can, these people can pay the thousand and over the period of fifty or sixty years, that money can be paid back to the government. But until we get serious about doing something like that and stop tossing our money away by doing studies and commissions and things like that to a whole bunch of groups that don't really build houses and just talk about affordability. And until rubber hits the road, then we're going to have this housing crisis. Just my opinion.
I travel around, I see so many opportunities. I go into the houses and you've got two people rattling around in these giant houses. They're three floors high and you look and you go, jeez, if they'd just roughed in a bathroom when they were building the house initially, this could be converted to some kind of apartment or something later on. You know, there's so many things that could be happening. I'm just wondering, are they working on it?
I'm going to, thank you. And yes, yes, there is work happening. I'm going to ask maybe councillor Todd and then the deputy mayor, and then I'm going to say one last thing about this.
Yeah, so some of what you just said is happening. So the new builds that we're seeing out in the west side of town are being built with roughed-in additional residential units in them so that the people who purchase those, they may or may not use them, but they have that available to them. So people who want to offset mortgage or if they happen to be a stage of life where having family members there that can then help out in that way, that's available to them or as the resales, they could have a basement apartment attached to them. So those units are getting built as we speak, we're already adding to that inventory. Your question about, you know, affordability and so on, and, you know, councillor Les, I'll echo what he had said, back of the napkin math, right? Like, if you say that, you know, the average wage is twenty dollars, let's make it easy math for this conversation. You know, you work forty hours, it's eight hundred dollars a week. You do that four weeks, you know, you're into thirty-two hundred. If thirty percent were that marker, it's about a thousand bucks, right? Like, and it's hard to find a thousand dollar, you know, places to stay. So that's the challenge that we're trying to figure out.
I have some other back of the napkin math for you. The Health and Legal Centre puts out a regular update of all the rental listings across Northumberland. The most recent one they put out showed that the most affordable rent, rental unit available in Port Hope at that time was for sixteen hundred and forty dollars per month plus forty dollars per parking for a one-bedroom apartment. A person who earns minimum wage nets nineteen hundred dollars approximately per month. So when you talk about the gap between what is available here and what is in any definition of affordable, obviously, it's, the challenge is obvious, right? But there was, we had an interesting discussion at an offshoot of the intermunicipal task force last week about whether when we're looking to expand affordable housing in our communities, do we need to be going the route of defining affordability and having subsidised rates or, you know, agreed to below-market rates for new rentals? Or do we simply need to make sure that we're building enough new stock that meets that? If you look at the housing continuum, it's called the missing middle. So those one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, smaller-sized homes, ideally in multi-residential. And if we build enough of those, we have enough of those added to the inventory, then that also naturally brings the cost of those units down. So there's multiple ways of getting to it, some of which require that definition of what's affordable. But there's also some common sense about, we know what's affordable and what's not. And currently, what we have on offer is not affordable to the majority of us.
And just one final note on that, if we are to start to offer up diversity of housing, we also need the community behind us. So the community has to be open to seeing things built in a different way in this community, different models of housing, different options for housing. And so we're going to need the community to help support some of these initiatives moving forward as well. Any other questions from the public this evening? Okay, seeing no other questions, this concludes our business to be covered by today's agenda. And I'm in a position to adjourn the meeting of the committee of the whole at eight oh six PM. Thank you very much for all in attendance.